So we are all ready to move to our next session, which is a very important session from the point of view of ECOMOS and ECOMOS India. As we all know that ECOMOS is isn't one of the advisors to UNESCO on World Heritage Matters. Therefore, the role of ECOMOS and all the national committees of ECOMOS become very important in their own countries. Whenever the World Heritage Matters come to be, come for discussion. In this current year, it is our very strong urge that we celebrate fifty years of the UNESCO World Heritage Convention. And we participate in activities both nationally and internationally, which are geared towards the fiftieth year anniversary of the World Heritage Convention. What is, what we are doing today is going to be first in the series of discussions towards this fifty years of World Heritage Convention. An idea is to look at the convention and the impact of convention from critical perspective, especially in the Indian context. There have been discussions in the past that the whole world heritage process has, you know, been more and more bureaucratized, bureaucratic, bureaucratized and politicized. Where the European and let's say the far western influence on world heritage and its processes has meant that the eastern ideologies and philosophies of heritage have not been considered duly when it comes to nominations. So this has been largely the view over a period of time that the approaches and the understandings of heritage in the eastern context need to be strengthened and find their way into the world heritage nomination process. So what we are going to see today, a series of panelists who will come and talk about the World Heritage Convention and its impact and role in the Indian context. They have very vast experience on dealing with world heritage matters. And from ECOMOS India side or organization, we would have Professor Surya Narayan Murthy, who is also our South Zone representative to lead the discussion to moderate the session, who will be introducing the speakers, who will be nudging them if they are going to be going beyond the specific time because we have to stick to the time limit. And after all the panelists have spoken, we are going to open out the discussion as around table to all the members who are present offline and online. A broader aim is to develop at least a two-page note on ECOMOS India's understanding of fifty years of World Heritage Convention in an Indian context, very specific to that. And send it to UNESCO or at least ECOMOS International. So that as and when these discussions come up, the Indian perspective is also put across the table. And we are all very delighted and happy to note that India is now a member at the World Heritage Committee. So India has a very close working relationship with the World Heritage Centre on matters related to world heritage. And doubly so, we also have Dr. Jyoti Hosagrah, who was a former ECOMOS India member, who is a deputy director of the World Heritage Centre. So the point is that we have several windows open for our voice to be heard. Provided we have a voice, provided we have a point of view. Provided we have something meaningful to say. We don't want to go critical and this, that, blah. If it is substantial, if it is meaningful, if it is impactful, then we want this voice to be taken into cognizance when world heritage matters are discussed at higher political levels. With that, I will invite Professor Surya Narayan Murthy to conduct the session, which is approximately time that about two hours, after which for offline people, we will have Haiti. And for online people, they can have their Haiti at their own convenient places. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Naveen. Already Mr. Naveen has mentioned the background in which we have started this. If you look at the World Heritage website, we have, what is the, after fifty years of nineteen seventy-two World Heritage Convention, after its establishment in nineteen seventy-two and adopted in nineteen seventy-two, we have about eleven hundred and fifty-four world heritage sites on list. Where this convention looks at to safeguard exceptional world heritage sites, exceptional heritage sites across the world, taking care of and also addressing the respective national context in which they are all situated in. So keeping this background in view, we would like to hear from, first, the program is organized into two parts. The first part is where we listen from World Heritage UNESCO Delhi Office on the occasion of fifty years of World Heritage Convention from Mr. Eric Fal, who is a director and representative for the UNESCO Delhi Office. And Ms. Juhi Han, who would be, she is a program specialist for culture. So we will be first listening to them and then that will be for about fifteen minutes. Then we have panel discussion participants who would be reflecting on the Indian context. We have Mr. Janvi Sharma, additional director general from Archaeological Survey of India. Professor Ajay Khare from School of Planning and Architecture Bhopal. And Professor Nalini Thakur, retired professor from School of Planning and Architecture New Delhi, who will be joining from Chennai. And Dr. Shika Jain, President Drona Foundation. So this will be our first part, then it is, this is going to be for thirty minutes. Then after the these reflections and discussions, we have introduction to ECOMOS India Master Plan Heritage India by Aditi Rai, it is going to be for twenty minutes. Then we will continue this on World Heritage Convention and the matters relating to World Heritage and also how ECOMOS India could be integral part of various activities of World Heritage Matters. This we will have across the membership and because it is an open meeting that is happening, apart from membership, there are also others who are joining on Facebook and other mediums, other social medium. So for now, without taking much time, I start with a recorded presentation of Mr. Eric Fal, Director and Representative for the UNESCO Delhi Office.
Dear friends, good afternoon and thank you for inviting me to say a few words on the occasion of the annual general meeting of ECOMOS India. Given the specialist audience gathered today, I am sure that many, if not all of you, know the unique, truly symbiotic relationship between ECOMOS and UNESCO. This year, we are in fact celebrating a very long association and the fifty years of the UNESCO Convention concerning the Protection of the World Cultural and Natural Heritage, or the World Heritage Convention, as we all say in short. The guiding principle of the convention, as you all know, was to designate sites that are seen to have an outstanding universal value and to represent the common property of all of humanity, past, present and future. Since ECOMOS was established with the mandate of preserving and promoting the techniques and doctrines of conservation of monuments and sites, we were a natural match in the context of the convention. And that is why ECOMOS, which also assisted in writing the text of the convention, was appointed advisory body to the World Heritage Committee. Fifty years on, the World Heritage Committee continues to rely immensely on the proactive support of ECOMOS in the theoretical and practical implementation of the convention. Fifty years on, the task of preserving world heritage remains as critically important as it was at the time of the adoption of the convention. India became a state party to the convention in nineteen seventy-seven and since then has had forty successful inscriptions on the World Heritage List with forty-nine sites on the tentative list. Beyond the obvious cultural benefits of a world heritage tag, there is also much to gain economically through the proactive promotion of monuments through tourism. In the early days of the convention, we probably didn't use to associate culture and tourism very much. But today, we are prepared to affirm that yes, the two can go hand in hand and probably must go hand in hand. Tourism means local jobs, business opportunities for small and medium enterprises, the renewal of urban and rural areas. And when properly managed, the preservation and promotion of a country's natural and cultural heritage. The more local communities, governments and civil society members are made to realize the tangible contributions of heritage to economic growth in real time, the more likely it is that agency and ownership over monuments will grow. The benefits of adopting such a strategy are not only that it will contribute to the protection, conservation and preservation of these sites, but will also prove to be an essential tool for the recovery of community and nations, especially in the post-COVID world. With all this in mind, UNESCO New Delhi was very proud to publish last year a book that I hope is on all your coffee tables, entitled Incredible Treasures. It showcases all the forty UNESCO World Heritage Sites of India. And of course, I want to thank Shika Jain, who led the research on the texts of this publication. It is available at good bookstores and on Amazon in India, but also as far as Australia and the United States. Since last month, we also have a French version in case some of you are interested. Of course, I realize that there are also multiple threats to the cultural heritage of India. In light of recent press reports and various court actions that are underway, I'm quite sure of one of the main topics of conversation you will have. And I'm quite sure also that most of us would agree on what needs to be done and the principles on which we should act. The spirit of the World Heritage Convention is very clear and I'm sure it will be more than ever a guiding light in our collective action. I wish you all the best for the upcoming discussions. Thank you.
Yeah, well, having heard the background note by Mr. Eric Fal, Director and Representative of UNESCO Delhi Office, we now start with reflections in Indian context, discussion among the experts. We start with Mr. Janvi Sharma, additional Director General, Archaeological Survey of India.
First of all, Surya, we couldn't hear that, you know, speech by Eric also. I really don't know what he said, because I thought my impression was that he would set up the context for world heritage and and look at it from our perspective as well. However, I'll try to give our perspective on the world heritage and I'll just
So can we have a little, just a louder voice, sir?
Give me a second, please.
Yeah, now it is, I think.
Am I audible?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right. As I said that, I was unable to hear what Eric said. So I really don't know what, you know, what context that he said for the discussion. But what I'll do is, I'll try to give our perspective, you know, as Archaeological Survey of India. Now that we are the, we are the members of the World Heritage Committee. First of all, thank you very much for inviting me over for this discussion. I've always believed and I think I've spoken with Naveen on occasions more than one that ASI and and ECOMOS should sit together and there are number of overlapping issues that we are handling and we are dealing with. And ECOMOS being one of the, you know, advisory bodies of UNESCO, obviously has a very critical role in this entire process of world heritage. Having said that, just to position Archaeological Survey of India or ASI is that on behalf of the government of India, it is the no dignity for world heritage matters. And I've had a privilege of working with many of my senior colleagues and my other colleagues also, who may be present here in the, you know, in this meeting, obviously I can't see them all. So it's been a great learning experience with all of them and, you know, I think from India's perspective, in the last ten years, at least I've been handling world heritage matters for the last ten years that we've been able to put up fourteen or fifteen sites, you know, on the world heritage list and this journey is still continuing. I have a few concerns on world heritage, both from the international perspective as well as our own, you know, national perspective or national concern. I thought I'll share with you all. Surya, Naveen, I think gave a certain statistics that internationally speaking, we have one thousand one hundred and fifty-four properties on the world heritage list and almost seventeen hundred or seventeen thirty-five or thirty-seven properties which are on the tentative list. That's a huge number. But because we are talking in the, in the context of the fifty years of the convention, so the, so the natural question is where are we going from here? Because there are voices saying that, you know, what should be the limit of this list? Because many state parties have different views on it, you know, there are certain regional perspectives on it, on it as well. If you look at the World Heritage Centre website, it gives you very interesting perspective and, you know, set of sort of, you know, numbers on it. For example, looking fifty years down the journey that the convention has made, it still has, you know, huge imbalance. Europe and North America still has about forty-eight percent of the sites on the list. Asia-Pacific is second in number, I think about twenty-four percent and other regions are, you know, much lower in terms of the percentages. So that imbalance still exists, even though the ratio has come down a bit. Because I think in two thousand ten or eleven, the ratio, the world heritage sites or properties in Europe and North America were somewhere around fifty-one percent. So that, that has come down to about forty-seven percent and Asia-Pacific, which is the second, has risen from about twenty percent to at the moment twenty-four percent. But other regions are almost sort of static in terms of their percentages. So that imbalance is something that, that needs to be looked into. If you look at the, India is sixth on the world heritage list. So you have Italy, China, Germany, Spain, France, which who are, who are ahead of us. The three, first three countries, which is Italy, China and Germany. Just these three countries have about fourteen and a half percent world heritage sites. The first ten countries on the list have about thirty-seven percent world heritage sites. And the first twenty countries have about forty-nine percent world heritage sites. Now that is, that is the imbalance that we are, we are actually looking at. And once out of one ninety-four countries that have ratified this convention, making it perhaps the UNESCO's most popular, you know, convention, still twenty-seven countries are yet to open their account. So now that we have got the membership of the World Heritage Committee for the fourth term from two thousand twenty-one to twenty-five, we are trying to address this issue. And there are number of other issues also that we are actually looking at. But one of the issues that we are, we are trying to figure out is this huge imbalance. And how do we bridge the gap or at least start the process of bridging the gap? I don't know how many of you are following, say, the, say, the evolution of the operational guidelines. You know, in nineteen seventy-seven, when the first time operational guidelines was, was sort of, you know, proposed, based on which the dossiers were submitted for world heritage nomination. In nineteen seventy-seven, the first operational guidelines had only twenty-eight paragraphs. And it started rising, it has been, it has been, you know, amended twenty-seven times. And now the operational guidelines have two ninety paragraphs. And obviously, for any world heritage nomination, we look up to what, what the operational guideline says and the format is also given. And the format has also started becoming much and more, much more exhaustive. If you look at the earlier dossiers, they were only for three or four pages and now you submit volumes after volumes. And Surya Narayan, bear with me, when, you know, when you were after his life for Ramappa, he had to produce so much documentation. And many other properties, Dhola Veera and other sites also, we had to come across with huge volume of documentation and all kinds of extras that needed to go along. So the process has started becoming much more complicated. And that's again, now that we are part of the committee, that we are, we are, we're trying to address this concern, you know, very seriously. I do not know how many of you are familiar with the, with this new introduction that has happened in operational guidelines. Certainly, I know Shika is aware of it, wherein, wherein there is a new step that has been introduced called preliminary assessment. So before we submit the nomination dossier, that we have to submit sort of a half, you know, half the word length of the nomination dossier to the World Heritage Centre, to the advisory bodies particularly. And then they will tell us whether a particular property or a site has a potential OUV and then you submit the dossier accordingly. Now, what is happening as a part of this process, if you look at the operational guidelines is, it's making the process longer by a little over a year. Second, it is making the process, because we are now, we are participating in these ad hoc working groups, that, that this process is becoming on an average expensive by at least about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars per, per, per site. In addition to what, you know, what ECOMOS is to, is to be paid. So India is looking at this issue quite critically and, and, you know, and, and by the way, this, this process is introducing from next year onwards until twenty-seven, it remains voluntary. And thereafter, you know, we, this, this process will become mandatory. So India is, is pushing for ensuring that this process remains voluntary even, even thereafter. As I mentioned in the beginning, that we have eleven fifty-four properties on the world heritage list, yet seventeen thirty-nine properties on the, on the tentative list. There is also a clamor, which is a discussion which is going on, in which they are, they are trying to reduce the number of properties to be nominated every year because of various reasons, particularly, you know, the budget constraints and other administrative reasons as well, which again, we are trying to look into very seriously because, you know, there, there were discussions going on to what level? You know, we started with a number of properties to be submitted every year, the limit was fixed to forty-five, then two thousand seventeen onwards, thirty-five. And now there are, there are discussions going on to reduce it further and make it twenty-one. There was also a discussion of reducing it further to eleven only. Now, if that happens, then the tentative list that we have right now will take at least hundred and seventy, about eighty to hundred and seventy years to put it on the world heritage list. Even though not all the sites, you know, will go on the list, but it will take that level, that kind of a timeframe in order to sort of put the sites or work on the nomination. So we are, we are looking at this issue, we are also exploring the issue with the, through the World Heritage Committee, whether, you know, this embargo of one site a year, can we sort of enhance it? And, you know, make it more two sites or three sites a year, whatever financial implications that a state party could be there. So a number of issues that we are, we are actually looking at. And domestically speaking, I'm sure you know that India has forty properties at the moment, ASI alone has twenty-four and many other agencies and ministries have, you know, world heritage sites, not the, you know, Ministry of Environment and Forests has eight, including one mixed site. And then many other state governments and municipal bodies have one-to-one, two properties each. So it is our endeavor that in times to come, not only that we improve our tentative list, but we also try to try to have more sites on, on, on the world heritage list, at least that's, I always push for that, you know, every year that we send a site, sorry, send a nomination dossier and the dossier has to be good enough, a quality dossier that has to, that must go so that, that, you know, when we interact with the advisory bodies and eventually the committee, that we ensure that the sites are put on the, on the world heritage list. I think that this is, this is the broad overview which I thought I'll, I'll give here. Rest, I think whenever the discussions happen later on, I'm, I'm happy to pitch in, you know, with whatever comments. Thank you. Thank you, Surya.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Janvi Sharma. Yeah, I think Janvi Sharma ji has informed all of us the complex situation in which we are in and also the complex future. And efforts to resolve these complexities involved in the operational guidelines and the process of recognition. So we will discuss this, starting at the complexity we have towards future. Now, our next speaker will put forth his points on this. Professor Ajay Khare, School of Planning and Architecture Bhopal. Over to you, sir.
The most asked question in last few years, am I audible and visible?
Yes, you are audible, sir.
Okay, great. But very unfair that I can't see you. Anyway, now this is good. Unless I see Surya, then how can there be light? Well, thank you very much indeed for giving me opportunity to be part of this panel. And as ADG, ASIs have already spoken, so meeting has become bureaucratic. So now, to make it informal, let me request Eric's for one line, that there is a tremendous development about that we have seen a wonderful book, Incredible Treasures, and also the French version. And I would request that if we can see a Hindi version soon and ECOMOS members, please contribute for Hindi version of it. And this book, if it is going to be published in Hindi, it would also be going to all possible stakeholders. You know, we sitting in this meeting and sitting in your venue are not the only stakeholders, but the big, much bigger stakeholders are those who cannot understand neither French nor English. So please, Madhu is saying I can translate it for everyone, please do that. And that is what we are here for, this, in this AGM, please contribute. Because what I am going to talk is also about where are we? Means I am, I am speaking today in two roles, one as a professor of architecture and professional, but also because I am member of National Monument Authority till July twenty twenty-two. So I also, also speak in that role. And in that role, I am much more critical of Ministry of Culture than, than as a professor. Being an insider, I now know that what is going on with our world heritage sites in last so many years. We are member or signatory of this convention for last more than forty years. If I am not wrong, the convention exists for fifty years and we are signatory and we are, we have ratified probably in early eighties and first our sites were in eighty-three, but what did we do? We, in nineteen ninety-two, we have promulgated two wonderful notifications. And those notifications mentioned that we would have around every national monument, hundred meter of prohibited area and then two hundred meter of regulated area, where everything will be regulated by an authority. And that authority was created only after twenty years of that notification, that is in two thousand ten. Now, in those twenty years, we lost so many things and we kept on writing about year after year, state of conservation reports. State of Conservation Report has been submitted for all world heritage monuments from year after year. And it said that we have a great legislation, legislation which, which has a regulated area and prohibited area. Now, what does that mean? You have rule in place, but we don't act on those rules. Why I say that even for the best-known monuments of our country, which are on world heritage sites list, Why I say that even for the best known monuments of our country, which are on world heritage sites list, we have failed to prepare any rules for the regulated areas. So that means we are saying we have a buffer zone, but our buffer zone is so-called regulated by a parliamentary act. But parliamentary act mandated that there would be rules, regulations for regulated area. Then those regulated areas would be governed by heritage bylaws. And how many heritage bylaws we have prepared? And when I joined, uh, National Monument Authority, there were only five notified heritage bylaws. Thankfully, there are many more now, but then I can even say that out of those five, only one was for world heritage site. That was for a milestone and thankfully done by Araghan Trust. And that became model heritage bylaws for National Monument Authority. But then model probably was not followed that seriously as it should have been. So now we have a great role for our ICOMAS members to play, that we can prepare these heritage bylaws, not only for world heritage sites, uh, regulated area, but also for all possible national monuments. I want to bring here one thing which, uh, our EDG ASI have mentioned, that year after year, we are submitting, uh, dossiers in which it, it would take years for us to make our tentative list monuments, uh, to come on the main list. I would say that, uh, we should re- re- reduce our tentative list. From in forty nine ma- monuments of tentative list, how many we was, we have serious seriousness to create or bring them on monument. Now, since nineteen ninety eight, a monument is there as world heritage site. And the state parties or state government or any stakeholders have not bothered to submit the nomination dossier. They should rather be removed from the tentative list instead of, uh, worrying about that they would ever come there or not. Well, uh, uh, having said that, I would say that we need to be more serious about it. I would give an example of Mandu. It was brought on the list, tentative list long back. And what happened in lo- in last fifteen years, there have been so much development in and around Mandu. Same is true for Sarnath, Sarnath, which is in the constituency of our honourable prime minister. There, we have even failed to limit that what is our centrally protected monument limits. So when we were passing some, we are approving, we were in the process of approving some development in the regulated area, we could not get a proper map of centrally protected monument limits from where to measure hundred meter and two hundred meters. And then there were so many hotels, so many de- development happening in Sarnath around those monuments. But still we are, uh, not making heritage bylaws for such important monument. Same is true for any monument which is located in urban areas. Where we have not prepared, for a long time, we have not prepared those heritage bylaws. Since two thousand ten, when the act came in picture, we should have probably been much more serious. Now, being a member of N M A, you would, uh, one would wonder that when I am saying, I am complaining about, complaining about our own authority or, no, it is our collective responsibility. And that is why I say collective responsibility. You know, in two thousand eleven or twelve, there were five organizations which were listed as advisory bodies for preparing heritage bylaws. But then consistently, they were not accepting the offers from N M A to prepare bylaws and, and vice versa. There were many issues related with, but then at one point of time, thankfully, heritage impact assessment exercise was given to conservation architects. Let me say it in such a meeting that all conservation architects, who have graduated from any of the places in our country, have legal authority to make heritage impact assessment plans if required by National Monument Authority and it would be considered by the National Monument Authority, of course, you are not a, one is not approving, it is not only intact, not only S P A, not only that, every individual is authorized to do that. Yes, of course, you should have been working in the field of conservation for long. So please, we professionals need to come forward to prepare these, uh, uh, and thankfully, N M A has notified some twenty five more organizations to help them and to conquer the heritage bylaws prepared by the respective regional directors of A S I. Because that is their job as per the rules, uh, prepared letters. So we can contact regional directors and not only request them, but also force them that please, in your domain, get, get these heritage bylaws prepared, because what happens that they really look for experts and they do not find those, uh, those kind of professionals who can help them. So, one thing which I, I would like to add at the end, that any state of conservation reports submitted by our organizations in world heritage, uh, committee, we should mention that whether heritage bylaws for that particular monument has been prepared or not and what is the real situation of the buffer zone. As per the rule, we should not say that, yes, there is a rule, there is a law, there is an act. We should say that actual situation is what? So with this, I would say that, bring to the point that management plans for world heritage sites. Now, out of, uh, our EDG staff has mentioned so many monuments on D L and world heritage sites. How many world heritage sites have site management plans? And when will they be prepared? Isn't, isn't it endless that we have been waiting for site management plan for Taj Mahal, for Ajanta, I think that there are some. But then, when we have a very strong legislation, at least prepare the, uh, one part of it, that is, those are heritage bylaws related. That will be part of the site management plan, isn't it? So with these points, once again repeated that I would vote for removal from tentative list. Forty nine, if, if the state parties are not serious enough to consider them to be brought on the list. Then, there should be, and I would request those who are going to be members of world heritage committee soon, that this should be considered seriously. And I would vote for one more thing, that why to bring more monuments individually? Why not the extension can be done like Chola temples? In nineteen eighty seven, we declared one Chola temple as world heritage monument and later on in two thousand four, you can see the gap. That till two thousand four, we waited for other Darasuram and other temples to be brought in the same day. Now we have this group which is called, uh, the Great Chola Temples. And that can be a better process of bringing world heritage, more monuments on world heritage site list.
Thank you, sir. I think you have brought in a completely different perspective or, uh, shifting from world heritage to national monuments. Uh, not only world heritage, but also, uh, national monuments, uh, where, uh, your experience of, uh, uh, National Monument Authority. Uh, you mentioned that, um, uh, the development of bylaws around these national monuments and, uh, site management plans in, uh, at world heritage sites too, also, uh, reducing when, uh, additional director general, uh, Janvi Sharma ji expressed that, uh, there has to be a different strategy to enhance more number of nominations differently. Where, whereas you, uh, mentioned that, uh, we need to reduce, uh, uh, altogether the tentative list, uh, some, reduce the size of tentative list.
Uh, one line I would like to add, Surya ji. No, when I talk about national monument, I must say that every monument which is on tentative list, A S I considers them to be national monument only, not on the tentative, they do not consider two different categories. It is only national monument and only this A M A S R act is applicable on both the mo- both the rules. Not only on what, national monument, but also on world heritage sites.
Yes, so in between the discussion, uh, also Shekha Jain, uh, has clarified that this, uh, convention was ratified in nineteen seventy seven. Uh, in the, in the case of Indian context. Uh, now, uh, before moving on to, uh, Dr. Shekha Jain, uh, I request, uh, Professor Nallie Thakur, uh, to, uh, present, uh, uh, her views, uh, on this, uh, the reflecting on the Indian context, both on, uh, world heritage and also national monuments, uh, in the Indian context broadly about world heritage convention. Over to you, ma'am, Professor Nallie Thakur.
I have called it Reflections on World Heritage Convention seventy two. And, uh, what I am going to be saying is that, uh, you know, that this convention seventy two has played a very important role in my life, in my teaching life. And I was fortunate to be involved at that point, in a very critical time in India, when the S P A started its conservation course. And, uh, from the beginning, the World Heritage Convention and UNESCO was very much part of the main, uh, you know, concepts or components that were inspiring me, uh, and telling me what I have to do. And along with that, it was the constitution of India. And you know, you have to know at that point, there was no, I mean, there was nothing as, uh, this kind of heritage that we are talking about. You know, it was not known and there was only A S I and they only spoke about, uh, what is it called, the, the Monuments Act. And they had nothing else. So when this conservation course in master started, it was a course in an architecture school. And so, uh, so the, you know, the, the scope of the course was architecture. And it left, and it was not about monuments as, uh, so that if one doesn't get into the, uh, you know, shoes of, uh, you know, the A S I people, so it was outside and it was to do with architecture and historical architecture. And I want, I have to say that this convention, uh, you know, really came to my rescue and was able to show, uh, show the, you know, the, what the global international way of understanding about heritage was at that point. And then I have a presentation, but I will be only talking about basics that are required. You know, I'm not, and I'm not interested too much in all the other things. So there is one point I'm going to bring out, I keep talking about it. And I think it is very important because, you know, it is not just about us, India and Indian heritage. It is also about, uh, UNESCO. I think it's about, uh, you know, it is a global, you know, and we have to be, we have to understand that. You know, it is not like they tell you what to do or whatever it is, it's not like that. So, you know, I have, so, but there are problems in it. And I know about some of the problems which I can talk, which I'll be sharing with you, is that I keep talking about what is called the New World Order, that followed the world wars of the twentieth century. My white paper has also, uh, talked about it and I shall start with that the same way. I want you to understand this, uh, New World Order of the twentieth century, brought about UNESCO. And it also brought about because UNESCO came for culture and education. And then you got World Heritage, uh, you know, convention in nineteen seventy two, which is also part of UNESCO. And then the, they, they actually, and the whole, you know, world heritage, uh, that convention had, you know, and they had a big secret area, they started expanding. So a whole system and a lot of internal content was produced till the charters. You know, and I, I, I think that was one good thing, interesting thing for us. We don't have to follow it blindly, but the fact was that the, after, you know, independence, I think conservation professionals and I in the beginning were one of the few people who had this kind of support, that was available. You know, so that, uh, we were not, uh, we didn't start from, uh, bare ground, you know, so that is what, uh, you know, so it, it makes a and also, you are, it is a very important landmark in human development. This whole thing about this New World Order of the twentieth century after the wars. It is the first time in the world that people, they have thought that you will think about the entire world's, you know, heritage and bring it under one umbrella. Or you think about education for the whole world. You know, it is something that's never happened before. We were all in our little countries and our little places and we did what we could. So suddenly you have this, but do you understand how complex this is? For, uh, India, Indians, Indian professionals, Indian, uh, whoever are here in this whole, uh, you know, uh, who are here in this, it is very complex and it is very difficult. Have you thought about that? Because I think that is the point I want to, uh, stress, because it is very, uh, you know, it is not simple. And here we are fully doing whatever we want to do and each one saying something different. And at, uh, no way is that entire heritage of India given a thought. You know, and, and, or any thought also given to, how will this be, uh, actually operationalized and executed along with UNESCO for, uh, world heritage side, even though there are so many, uh, you know, documents available. Still, it is not so simple as that. Okay, so that is what I, uh, the point I want to make and let us see how to do it. UNESCO is relevant for our area of interest, uh, uh, interest culture and heritage education. And after this, uh, you know, this New World Order, this laid the foundation of many international and intergovernmental, uh, government development, you know, intergovernmental institute organizations. And also that became a norm also. And we, uh, we actually ratify these, uh, you know, these conventions and we have to comply, that's what happens. Uh, so UNESCO is relevant for our area of interest because it is the culture and heritage education. The key document under the conservation is the World Heritage Convention. The, its signatories include many individual countries, India ratified this in the seventies. Uh, you know, I die in seventy eight, I got my, uh, thing in seventy eight. Shekha says it's seventy seven, but it doesn't matter, it's only after that, uh, some things were, uh, you know, there were some inscriptions made. So, and we have ratified it. It enables India to inscribe world heritage sites in compliance with the convention. Uh, it is a international legal statute. I would say one thing which is very important is that we have to all understand this. What is the problem, uh, Murthy? Is there a problem? But we all have to understand that this is a statute and a law. And we have to, you know, abide by that. And that is very important and we all have to be informed about this law. Uh, you know, and, uh, and that is why it's very important that even at the school level, at, uh, you know, uh, at a master's level, this, this law has to be taught. Because every conservation person, uh, who's a professional, who wants to work on world heritage, has to know this law so that they can talk at the international level as one to one, that's very important. You know, I, then I talk about this thing called the Council of Europe, because that was also another international organization that was only confined to Europe. And they had a very interesting, maybe the first time that there was this big, uh, whatever. I, I, this is just an overview of what I'm going to talk about.
Yes, yes.
I've, I've done the first point, it's, uh, about that and I've made a point about it. And then I have also mentioned Council of Europe, because Council of Europe actually brought out this, uh, thing called the Amsterdam Declaration. It was in nineteen seventy five. And, uh, you know, and then, uh, at the, in seventy five, this Council of Europe also had a, what is something called the European Architecture Heritage Year. Something celebrating historical architecture all over Europe. So it, it is the first time that something of this scale, uh, happened, you know, in the world, you can say, in, is nineteen seventy five. And, uh, now, now both this, uh, you know, this nineteen seventy two and the nineteen seventy five, in the seventies, Europe was more leftist in its thinking. And, uh, both this, uh, you know, that Amsterdam Declaration and this, uh, you know, uh, World Heritage Convention, is, or both has a leaning towards the left. And that is why it talks about state party and the way the whole, uh, thing has been drafted out is a much, it's a, it is really a socialist and it, it encompasses everybody and all the people, you know. So, so the, uh, the nineteen seventy two Convention of Natural and Cultural Sites, Paris was one of the last documents that was drafted, which demonstrated a left leaning of articulating a collective of articulating a collective interest and way of safeguarding a view, viewing the heritage world. This is different from the market-driven and promotional slogan-dering approach that is now very prevalent. Especially in Italy at that time, many regions and cities, north and south, you know, north and central Italy were communist, that, you know, city government. And this leaning had influenced the government policies in planning and development, focusing on also recovering many heritage areas. Post-war reconstruction also played an important part, part in igniting new ideas for the lost historic city and landscape regeneration. And explored the news and, and also explored new statutes to somehow, you know, and they started developing this whole area of conservation, a lot of things started happening. This was a big, but there was a big development, development gap between the north and south of Italy. Because south was not like that, it was only center and north. And we know, you know, what happened in Bologna and we know, there are, you know, all the places there. Development initiated by the left was better, providing more access to and, and direct communication with their people. Europe with UNESCO and Council of Europe were making some kind of move, going ahead with a broad scope of heritage resources for future, with a broadened scope of heritage for future action. And one can appreciate the outlook and importance of these organizing. But coming, the challenge in the Indian context is building knowledge. Because we had the problems, you know, you know, because yeah, because now we have to look, think about the relationship of Europe with the Indian, you know, what is regions, the region of this side of, of South Asia or India. And what is the relationship, you know, here? And how complex and how, and how great the increase in complexity? How complex is this? What is the increase in complexity? And what is it that, what has happened to us? Is that because we had a colonial rule and we asked, we have, you know, been sort of been told what to do and all our systems have been, you know, sort of from the British, we got their systems. And it is still, you know, it is still, it is, we are influenced by that. And also it has caused, and our system and our thinking is very different from what, you know, the British have, have taught us to do. And so, I mean, we have to think of this issue also. And so I think it's not about world heritage now. Even for world heritage, we have to know our own heritage very well. And we have to know the roots of this heritage very well. And so we have to train and we have to educate ourselves to be able to handle this heritage. Why? Because UNESCO is not a colonial agency. It is an international, intergovernmental agency where we are all equal and we have to talk one to one. That is what is expected. So that is the big challenge here and it's very difficult to cope. And, you know, and for us to know how to come, how to cope with this. And, you know, and how to, what builds, what I call knowledge, build knowledge, build education. And by doing and how we can actually manage, you know, what, this is what I think is the strategy. It is in education, it is in learning, our world, our architecture, not just what is going for world heritage. Not just the big fat ones that are, you know, monuments, but across the country. Because it is a whole architectural system that is standing there, which has housed the, you know, the poorest to the richest. It is all, you know, it's all part of one kind of architecture for one place. And somehow we are very complex system. So we have to know how to build ourselves and educate ourselves and for doing this. The challenge of the Indian context in building knowledge to formulate a relevant policy and practice for a responsible protection and management that will work across the nation. Our job as ecowas and conservation professionals is a, is to configure an effective relevant system, a system that integrates with the international and with the ground where the sites are located. And, and with the inscription of world heritage sites in India, under the convention, a new area of governance and tasks and, you know, and a new resource, you know, for conserving, protecting and management has emerged in relation to matters of heritage and community. First, which is the Indian experience, yeah, first with the Indian independence itself. I think all this responsibility has come onto the Indian people into the Indian state, which is also quite big because before, there was really no responsible. It was all done, whatever the British people did, what law they had and how they did it, we followed. Now the second with world heritage sites, where India as a, becomes a responsible state party. Extreme diversity is a hallmark of the Indian context in language, in culture and in architecture. And as a conservation professional, one has to understand the vertical and the horizontal integration that is expected. Actually, that is the thing, the new world order, it comes to the next point, is the kind of vertical integration starts with, you know, UNESCO and goes to the ground. And then, and then how do you, how do you work with this, in this, with this, you know, you know, with this kind of, you know, what, when you have this experiment, experiential, learning, academics, they have to be converted into, for me, the way I did it was by what I call learning and teaching, building knowledge, educating and doing. And, and so it was a learning, learning and teaching. That was the way my entire school, what I taught was, you know, because I didn't know anything when I joined the school, the Department of Conservation, I had to find out first. So there was a, there was a way in which I was learning and teaching and doing, you know, doing means I was also doing projects because that's the only way I can learn. So I needed to do that. So I had a kind of balanced, you know, round kind of way, loop, you know, right, kind of circular way which I was doing. And that was, I mean, that is, but, but I, and then I had this World Heritage Convention and its doctrinal content and the Indian constitution and that is it. And then I looked around and saw and worked out for myself and with whatever kind of learning I got from architecture and I used all that and that is how I managed. So, but yeah, to tell you, one more thing is I made many models. And these models were used for everything, for teaching, for me to do my own work and for professionals work, everything, you know. So, so that the basis was always the same. I can, if I, I can change the model also, it doesn't, because then I find that something is not working. So it's quite flexible. And, and then I also know when I approach another person or in, even in the class, I am, I am quite consistent. I will not, you know, change, suddenly change or come up with different things. I have worked it out and this is the one that is there, the model for me. And I just follow it for communication, okay? And now, so early in my career, I had the opportunity to be the first, well, to be in the first conservation department at the School of Planning and Architecture Delhi. I focused on developing an appropriate system to protect and manage the vast legacy of living heritage of the country. The primary challenge was to safeguard living heritage resources beyond the scope of the center or state monuments. India's wealth of historical architecture was unprotected and vulnerable. And as a conservation educator, I developed new approaches to architectural conservation and education at SPA. Most significantly, I developed and put forth holistic models and, and new innovative methods and frameworks for learning and teaching. The Masters Program in Architecture Conservation in Delhi's SPA that I contributed is, is in its, in its development, in its development. At that time, I used the same frameworks and the same methods. It proposes an integrated way of development of living, the architectural heritage management from first principles. This includes approaching the challenge from the position of no authority for, to, you know. And, and yeah, I mean, it is from a position of no authority. Okay, now let me talk about the next one. So now what is this, you know, look at the challenge that you have. You have to integrate in international obligations because as a, for having, you know, ratified, we have to comply also with that, with national responsibilities towards living heritage protection and management and the India, within the Indian region. I say that because I am counting and looking at architecture and not monuments as such. And I'm looking at the field of architecture, which is the field of every architect that all the architecture schools had closed their eyes to. Now here is the thing about the vertical jurisdiction. You know, this is the challenge from the international to the local. Here you have the vertical jurisdiction for the world, when you, when you work on a world heritage site, you have, you'd have to deal with it. And if you work on a world heritage site that is endangered, you will have to deal with it even more. And that is what, you know, it was with working on Humpy, you know, and, and certainly, you know, no one is really conscious about, or ever thought how to look at it. Now the vertical jurisdiction applicable to all categories. So from UNESCO, you have center, World Heritage Center, you have ICROM, you have ECOWAS, you have IUCN. All these are at that, that highest level. The convention is doctrinal content, complete to charters. Other accepted organizations also have, you have, because ECOWAS has accepted Getty. It has also affected IFLA because IFLA is a landscape organization. And now, and that is why, you know, I have put it here because it goes against what I call the, you know, for me, I don't see landscape people as part of culture. And somehow I think this was a mistake that they have made some tie-ups like this. Because now with this archaeological park, which is a very effective way to, to actually handle many sites with archaeological, that have archaeological content under the ground, over the ground. You know, they're all, you know, they are all being subjected to landscape. Which is wrong because it's a cultural, the nomenclature archaeological park means it's a cultural category. And that category was always there, you know, with, in, with UNESCO. Because, you know, the early, early nineteen seventies, you know, sites like Mesa Verde were, were categorized as a, as part of the cultural park. It was called cultural park in the seventies. And the same, same thing I have called archaeological because it's in the Indian situation, it makes a lot of sense, but it is a cultural designation and nomenclature given. And then there are all these new ideas and formulas that are given and that we are all fed. And there's too much of it. And then all that is happening to, to the person who wants to work on world heritage sites. Then you have your state party system, three parallel jurisdictions. No two, none of them will listen to each other. Central or ASI, then you have the state, you know, the state of Karnataka. And then you have the local governance under the seventy third and twenty, seventy fourth constitutional amendment. I can tell you when we were working on, you know, on Champene, which later became a world heritage site. Right in the beginning, the whole initiative was taken by the people of, by people of Baroda, who wanted that to become a, become a national site. We were not even thinking about anything more. But we could not get anybody from ASI to come to our meetings. So you see, because we have these parallel jurisdictions, parallel organizations. And I think this is what we have to sort out, you know. And these are all, these are the problems that are very relevant to us. And for some, even though we are fifty years now or whatever, and even, but we have not thought about these things. We should be thinking about it and seeing how we can all work together and make it, make things happen properly. And, and then of course the whole importance of what is called lateral coordination. Let me tell you, I have used the same concept in teaching. And now I'm trying to see how this can be utilized for ECOWAS to make them as professionals, you know, for world heritage sites. This is what I'm now trying with all this white paper and also, you know, and what are the, what is the kind of discourses we should be having here? And I think today's is a very good discourse that we are having. And I'm, I really congratulate Naveen Peplani for having thought about it. Because this is what we should be talking. And then it is, that is how we will tell people together over a broad area that is required for our world heritage sites, you know. And then this importance of lateral coordination, you understand? When you go on the site, this is some P, on the site, all these things that I told you in the previous is working on it. How do you achieve something harmony here? It is only through the best lateral coordination among all those people who have, who are working in this. So this whole thing about coordination is a very important in the, in, for us, for our world, at least for this world heritage sites. But it is also important for other sites, every site. Because they all have the same, they don't have the top part, but they have the rest of the parts. So I mean, we have to think about how to, you know, technically, professionally, reform and, and it can be done. Because there is enough that can, that can be done here, you know. It's not, it is not impossible and, but only problem, you cannot
Ma'am, sorry to interrupt. Yeah. I think you're also looking at the education and training part and how it has evolved. So we have this part, the second part also is, appears to be covered. Now in this, now we will pause for, for a while and we will continue this discussion after one more presentation.
No, no, I can, I can finish this up, no? Because it is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, because you have mentioned about education and development initiatives and in the Indian context, how this subject has evolved from, from UNESCO and Council of Europe and from priority on knowing what is ours, our heritage.
That is another side, our side is another side. This is another side. Now this new world order is started doing this new thing, you know, and trying to fit it together.
Yes ma'am, so as we are discussing the education part also in detail, how we need to move ahead because that is being covered in the second part of the discussion.
But here, I am just going to, you have to talk for the management plan, you have to talk about the, you know, what is, you know, for Humpy. I mean, because, you know, that is what is called, you know, I won't talk about education. I'm not really talking about education.
Okay, so would you like to continue, we would like to, would you like to continue or?
I just finished your talk, I just
Sure, sure, please, please go ahead.
Yeah, because I wanted to talk about this Humpy. It was a world heritage endangered site and what happened? And it is where all these vertical you have to deal with and really learn it. What was the problem? ASI thought about it as, you know, what is that called? Group of monuments and they thought about all circles around each monument. And then, and you can see here in nineteen eighty six, UNESCO in Paris is trying to tell them, this site cannot be seen as little monuments, it has to be seen as a large site. And it needs to have a buffer zone. So that is two things that are critical and they are essential that has to be done in the management plan. And then afterwards, they have made this, this is what we got. And for instance, the first thing is a site itself and it is based on a GOK, what is it? Notification of nineteen eighty eight. And after that, you know, there is, they put buffers on and then the peripherious zone. And this is the protected area according to, according to ASI. Now that is what the point here is, you cannot have, you cannot see this in such different ways. You have to agree, as human beings, you have to agree, you know, and find a way out. And, you know, and that is the thing and that, you know, you have to learn from what is happening and try to read up, see how other people are doing a better job, whatever it is. So, but, so it was agreed that the, the site will remain this and we will put a buffer zone. And the peripherious zone will not be, is not, is not there. That is what UNESCO told us. But I don't know what exactly is there, you know, because the, you know, you know, the, as I went on doing the same thing. So that is the problem here, you know. So, you know, it comes to Doing the same thing, so that is the problem here, you know, so you know, it comes to the very definition of the site, we don't know. I know, we don't, we don't agree whether it's a monument or a site or a cultural landscape. When we studied the site, we, they, we, they, we thought it was better as a cultural, it's a classical, perfect cultural landscape, okay? And then we had to define the, what did the, uh you know, ECOMAS say? That you know, you have put these monuments as a world heritage, in world heritage sixty, fifty six. But there are other monuments that look just like that, like this, but they are not on world heritage. And there are so many other things that all add up to the values of the site, which is not in world, you know, not in the site at all. The nature, the hills, the boulders and so many other things. So that is, so, so that is why we had to work out and try to redefine the site. So that when we describe that site, we are telling everything that is there, you know. So, and we have to use the existing tools and framework and we have done it. And whatever, and the institutional framework, whatever. Tell me one thing, if I, I go, I'm talking too much, forget it, yeah. There was one very big, uh you know, what is it called, uh you know, proposal of. Our information center at the site. And the Hawama people, the government of Karnataka started that, they spent a lot of money and put it up. And, and it was very good because a lot of the revenue records were all mutated and we got the right thing for the whole site. Because those guys from the Hawama and the government of Karnataka, they all are some type of revenue people. So they did that, you know, so it is now easy for them to know what is legal and what is not legal. But this was, this information center was supposed to be inaugurated by UNESCO that time. But it never got inaugurated, now we don't know where it is. That is what has happened, so everybody, many people have taken off many of those computers, whatever. So you know, the thing is when you are trying to do something, there is, there doesn't seem to be an agreement or a consensus about things. You know, and there were a lot of these kind of things that happened and so whatever, then there was no funding. From the government for responsible activities. You know, which is, that, which should be, and I, I'm really now saying that it is UNESCO that has to help in all these areas. Because we cannot help in these areas, they are the ones who, who have that World Heritage Convention and they have to help. It were, you know, or some, you know, and when foreign people come, they also have to say what we need. Not what they think, uh you know, we should have, you know, things like that. So it is on the level of working, it's going, going off. Yeah, then there was this one, quite a big thing that was done, was called the Joint Management Plan. Now in the Humpty site, both the state government and, you know, the, actually the problem for me is my client was ASI. And uh but that site really had a, belonged to the state government. They also had a lot of things with them, you know, monuments and all that, so they, you know, but so you had to have a joint management plan. So that is happening, at least they have agreed, but for the long time they wouldn't agree. Because they did not want to disclose how much money they got, so what we now told them is you just make a plan. And you do yours, you do, uh you know, and the other fellows do theirs, but we have a joint. You know, guidelines or regulations for it, if you follow, we don't want to know anything more than that. There was a plan for development, for the development, there was a, you know, education plan for the entire site. You know, the site actually is a, became, was a master plan for a local planning area, which included, which had twenty-nine villages. And there was a health plan also, you know, uh those were the two plans because we need to do something for development. And we have to do for heritage, so that is what we did.
Um can we, can we move on to the?
Yeah, I think that's, I think.
Continuing part, okay ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I.
Sure, I think you have mentioned the most important point through this case, uh demonstration, demonstration where. Uh we also need to look at the national monuments and not only world heritage, but with the example of a, a. A group of monuments too, how it has moved from to a redefinition and.
Yes.
Need to look at transdisciplinary paradigm, which you emphasized in terms of planning, the understanding of planning. Uh and management of the site.
Yeah.
Uh I think this is a very apt example that we need to discuss, now we move on to um next speaker.
No, no, let me finish, the redefinition, this picture is important, it tells you what, how we redefinitely define the site. We added a lot of categories of heritage and then the last thing I should tell you is what is this bazaar? It is all, has been totally demolished now, there were people living there before. And you know, and in our, uh in, it is there in our, in what we have said is to make it a field school. Living Heritage Field School at Humpty Bazaar. Now, it is not, I mean, all the people have been removed. But at that point, it was supposed to be a field school from UNESCO Bangkok. And it was so that they will also be part of the field school, the people who are there, so that we can get them to help. Uh with the, uh how to repair and how to live there also. And even though if it's old, but they will learn how to live there, okay? And that is it, I think that's enough.
People are, in the community and people are around, how the living heritage is part of the heritage. That is another dimension that we need to.
This is what we said, you know, the thing you have to know is what we said, but what was done?
Okay.
They were all removed.
Yes.
And there was a very nasty court case on them and they were all removed. You know, and, and it is all to do with money, you know, because people are selling it.
We will discuss over this ma'am, now we will move on to our next speaker, uh Dr. Shika Jain.
Shika Jain.
Uh could you please join?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good afternoon everyone.
Now, there was a discussion by Mr. Janvi Sharma and also he mentioned the. Uh the complexity that we have and Sir Ajay Kari from National Monument Authority, he brought out. Some of the shift that is required for us and Professor Nallie Thakur from education to a case study where. She demonstrated some of the issues that we have been facing at these sites, uh the, the World Heritage Convention fifty years. Uh so how do you reflect upon these thoughts, Dr. Shika Jain, over to you, please?
Uh so, uh thank you, uh thank you, ICOMAS India for giving me this opportunity. And I would like to reiterate what Professor Nalini Thakur has said, that this is a very. Uh critical theme, you know, that we need to dialogue on and it's good that you have taken this opportunity to hold this session. Uh I'm really, uh I think my co-panelists have said a lot. And what I would like to say is, would also reflect on what they have said. Um I think Professor Nalini Thakur has brought to, brought forth a very important point, so has Professor Kari. On the cultural landscapes and on the conservation and management of these sites. Uh but I would like to start, you know, from the history of this convention. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with the history of this convention, uh the book that Mr. Eric Falschert. Uh its introduction clearly mentions that because we have, I went through the history of the convention and. Really looking at how India has contributed to the convention or what it still needs to do. So that part is written in the introduction of the book, but just to summarize it, you know, the, the thought of having such a convention, when did it start? It was actually at an IUCN Congress, you know, that time ICOMAS was not even in the picture. It started with IUCN Congress and that Congress was held in nineteen sixty-nine in Delhi. So it's very, it was a very interesting find for me. And also between sixty-nine to seventy-two, there was a lot of back and forth and one important factor in that is that. The culture and the nature conflict was still there, even that between the advisory bodies, IUCN and ICOMAS. And the whole point of putting this convention was that we are doing culture and nature together. So ideally, we should have had a convention which already had the symbiotic cultural landscapes in it, but that didn't happen. And what did happen in seventy-two was we were given these categories which had the sites, the, which, which had either the cultural heritage or the natural heritage. And you know, the cultural heritage was reduced to just monument sites and group of, a group of monument sites and um. What, yeah, group of monuments, monument, singular site and the sites itself. And the natural heritage again has a similar category which continues to be in the operational guidelines even today. What Mr. Janvi Sharma mentioned that there have been twenty-seven, as far as I know, thirty. Changes to the operational guidelines where categories have been added for cultural landscapes, historic cities, canals, routes. But these are all still in the annexures of the operational guidelines, this is not in the main convention, which is what should have happened. Of course, now we have hundred ninety plus countries who have ratified it, it's very difficult, you know, to change the convention and go back. So, so we have to do with whatever we have, but what ICOMAS needs to focus or what India needs to focus. Is that we need to look at that balance or the imbalance, you know, that's what was talked about, the credibility. And this is something India has looked at because it's been, this is the fourth time it's in the committee. When it was in the committee, the third time I was actively involved in looking at all these documents, we contributed a lot in changing. Or editing some of these documents, also adding certain aspects in the operational guidelines. Um but what is, what most important point is that we actually revise the tentative list. And I would refer to what Professor Ajay Kari mentioned, remove some of them, but also add some of them. So I think most of you would recall, we had these six workshops across India where we asked the states to come up. Uh with ASI and the Ministry of Culture and all the state governments involved, there were some two hundred fifty plus proposals. That came from across India, out of which the committee reviewed, this is the Advisory Committee on World Heritage, reviewed and, and shortlisted it to fifty-four. And for knowledge of Professor Kari, I would want to say, uh inform that a lot of sites were removed. There were sites on the tentative list like Oak Grove School, which was nominated by the Ministry of Railways. And we informed them that there is no OUV there and they withdrew it. And there are other examples, there were sites on the Mogul Gardens, which was on the tentative list and it had no protection. It was not protected and we informed them that this, any site cannot be on the tentative list unless it has a protection. And they created a legal, you know, protection for that. So the idea of tentative list itself is that it is a tool for protection and control and that was used. Mandu was also evaluated and we do agree that it maybe even that needs to be beyond the group of monuments and a. You know, really a cultural landscape, what Professor Nalini Thakur has already mentioned about Humpty. These were errors made earlier, but made because the convention itself had those categories and it still continues. But our focus was with the revision of tentative list and also with inscriptions thereon from twenty twelve onward. You would see that India has got mixed nomination, it's got more cultural landscapes on the tentative list as well as inscribed. It got its first mixed nomination, Conchanjoga National Park inscribed in twenty sixteen. And also it has a transnational, now transnational sites, the Chandigarh one with, with seven other countries. This is something very much what the convention is all about, it is about universal value. And cooperation between different countries to protect properties that are universally accepted. So this kind of collaboration is really important. India also launched a very important program, Project Mossam, that now ASI and Mr. Janvi Sharma are steering. That was, you know, linking thirty-nine countries and looking at the shared heritage and looking at inscription for, uh you know, transnational nominations. So, so there are a lot of, you know, areas in which India has worked on and there is a commitment to do more. And of course, I totally agree that what we still lack is the conservation and protection. What Professor Kari and Professor Nalini Thakur have already mentioned, we, we continue to get sites inscribed on the list, but they are not managed well. And this is something that we need to instill with, within the government scenario or institutions that we are working in. Because they just see that, uh you know, the idea of getting a site inscribed. And as professionals or, you know, we, we can just inform them and get all the legislations in place or the management. Uh pro- uh plans in place till the site is inscribed. But once the site is inscribed, you see them, you know, how lax they are with the commitments. It takes, you know, it extends to two years, to five years and there is no response and the site is really suffering. So, so this is a point that we really need to work on and I think that's what ICOMAS India should focus on. And the second one, again mentioned by my co-panelist, that involving people, you know, involving the community. This is again one of the five Cs under the convention that was defined later. Uh so it's, it's community, credibility, capacity building, communication and conservation. And all these five Cs need to be addressed, so I think community, engaging with people and I, I really. I'm happy that Professor Kari said that the, the book should be in Hindi, whether it's, it is in Hindi or it is further broken down really. For the common people to understand what is outstanding universal value. Because that's what UNESCO also always asks, you know, when they come on site, do these people or do, do these residents know what? What the outstanding universal value is, until that understanding is not there, they don't have a sense of responsibility. And often unintentionally, they are actually damaging those sites, you know, the, the, at times the attributes that contribute to its OUV. Uh so I think this is what I just wanted to summarize, I think most has already been said by my co-panelist. And we've already overextended the time, so thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Shika Jain. Uh I think you have mentioned very important points, mainly two points. One is on the revision of our lists and we look at the definitions and nomenclature. That we have been talking about, about our sites, be group of monuments, our cultural landscapes, archaeological parks. Which was also mentioned by other panelists, Professor Nallie Thakur and John Vish Sharma G and. Uh Professor Ajay Kari, and you also mentioned in the last about five Cs emphasized by the convention about community. Or credibility, communication, capacity building and conservation. Um these are very important and now I think for not breaking the flow of this panel discussion. We will not be having the, uh without, without having any break in between. We will continue this and complete this in another next uh ten to fifteen minutes. Um the latter part of the World Heritage Matters and involvement of ICOMAS India. Uh in the matters of world heritage, in the participation, the way it is happening at, when we look at international scenario. Uh every action and activity of World Heritage Center, you would see a, a background support, a continued background support. Uh from ICOMAS International, so how do we ensure with the growing membership? And growing interest in ICOMAS India and growing participation from emerging and young professionals. In the field of conservation, how do we look at it? Um all the panelists, I would like to know and we will discuss, we will start with uh. Janvi Sharma G, please, over to you.
Can I, can I request Ajay to begin because he has, he has a department and I'll, I'll follow maybe a little later from there.
Okay, so we will start with Professor Ajay Kari.
Thank you and thanks, Janvi G for giving me opportunity, your opportunity to me. I would say that this is actually one thing which I would say that really takes satisfaction in. While being member of NMA, we could instill a lot of hope for conservation architects. In the authority or as well as confidence of authority that conservation architects can contribute. And thankfully, ACHIA has been brought on the list that any conservation architect who. Is a, a qualified professional can work for heritage impact assessment of a certain size of a project. It was initially only for some organizations, now it is for individuals as well who are working as an individual practice also. So this is one thing which I would say that one opening which has come on to our members. And so ICOMAS members and younger members for that matter have got a tremendous responsibility as well as involvement. Now, we see. Now, we see remote areas where people like very large organizations cannot contribute it. But I mean, when we went to Shivsagar, we met a lot of young enthusiasts who wanted to work on those monuments which are in Shivsagar and even maidams which are further downs Shivsagar. So then they need to be enrolled, not DP, not ASI circle from Chorat only. They, they have to be there, but younger professionals can contribute in a very big way.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Professor Kari.
Thank you.
So Professor Nalini Thakur.
Well, I, it is education. But I think, you know, there's education for this kind of world heritage sites and all. I think there's a lot of new inputs that are required. You know, because I call it the new paradigm, you know, because there, there's quite a lot of complexity that you have to handle. And the intellectual capacity has to be very high because the conservation architect has to think about so many things. Not just doing a project, you know, it's quite encompassing so many other things. So for me, it is new education, that's what I call, you know, it is very important. And because India is such a, you know, it's a place with so much, I think it should be taken very seriously. And that way, I think that ICOMOS is a very good platform to, you know, to initiate these things. And do you know how many schools, colleges want to start some conservation posts all over India? You won't believe it. And they don't know anything, they just know that they can get so many lacks for every student. You know, India is a kind of place like that, they have such parents who, you know, who are willing to support. And they don't, they don't ask for much. So this is the time we have to, you know, actually see that it is of very high quality what we are giving.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Shikaj. You're muted.
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to understand the question, is it about how you bring forth new conservation professionals or young minds into the picture?
It is, uh, involving the way what we see at the international scenario. Any activity at the international scenario that happens at UNESCO World Heritage Centre, you would see a lot of academic, intellectual and research and administrative support that they receive from ICOMOS International. So how do we do that in Indian context, ICOMOS India to be part of all these activities? Of course, there was some brief activity that you mentioned about Advisory Committee on World Heritage Matters uh some eight, eight, nine years ago and all that. But how do we continuously engage ourselves? How do we integrate that?
Uh, I think, I mean, that's what this whole session is about, no? So ICOMOS India has to move forward with partnerships with various organizations, both private and public sector to move into this. I think, I mean, you, you already have the answer in your background note for this session on how to move forward. Probably what you need to do now is really have a clear action plan, you know, if you have the zones and how, how those can engage. I, I think what I, what I observed in ICOMOS India in the last three, four years is the emerging professionals group, which is really very promising. So I, you know, and what you're doing today, just having one mentor with each or, you know, that would really help to move things forward. But then bridging the gaps both, both with the public sector, so going to the government organizations and that is the toughest part. Because half the time they are not interested, you know, or they don't understand or they don't have the time. And on the other hand, you know, bring in other peer groups or NGOs. So what we have generally observed is that the government is very receptive. If you show that there is a sort of a collaboration of NGOs or peer groups which are supporting what they are doing. So if you give that kind of indication, then usually it's, it's a good collaboration. And it's, it's also, I mean, we realize that in lot of these world heritage sites, you know, it's the locals who are unaware or who at times are damaging things. So government is creating something, some facility, it could be solid waste also. That's a major problem I find in most world heritage sites, you know, rather than the conservation part. But, but the locals are not aware and, you know, they are actually damaging those things which have been placed. So I think we need to work on both, you know, aspects, the public and the private sector and with all kinds of community people, the, the house owners, the young education, educational institutes and NGOs.
Yeah, three different perspective we have listened to. One is on Professor Ajay Kari mentioned about opportunities to anger the generation. Uh, where he had quoted some examples of the northeast where Shivsagar and Mariko, some of the location, national monument authority locations. He had mentioned, whereas Professor Nalini Thakur emphasized on something called new education. And many institutes are coming up in the field of conservation. So what kind of education and what intellectual capacity that we build, intellectual capacity, whether they have the intellectual capacity to look at and what heritage is and in what direction one has to look at. And Shikaj, Dr. Shikaj mentioned about partnerships, be it in terms of public partnerships and private partnerships, collaborations with local authorities and communities, public authorities and private organizations. That is what she has mentioned about. So listening all this, how do you take this forward, Janvi Sharma G, over to you.
Thanks, Surya, for the consumption of Professor Ajay Kari. Uh, I'm going to remove the bureaucracy sticker from my, my forehead and talk more as a, as an architect maybe. Uh, but allow me to react on a couple of points and then I'll talk about, you know, uh, engagement with conservation professionals and with, with ICOMOS in particular. Uh, A, that the, the process of tentative list is a dynamic process, it continues to happen. Shikha did a phenomenal job when she was the Member Secretary of the Advisory Committee on World Heritage Matters. And at that point in time, an exhaustive process was undertaken, there were six regional workshops and a subcommittee created uh more than two fifty proposals and then out of that, I think at that point in time, forty six to forty seven proposals were shortlisted for tentative list. She's right in mentioning several were removed, several were modified, concerns were raised, which the state governments, you know, addressed. Uh, we continue to do the same. Uh, last year we had six on the list, this year to begin with, we had three on the list. We are right now, as we say, we are still working on looking at these sites and some of the sites which have been languishing for a, for a number of years. Some of the sites promising yet, you know, the dossiers were submitted and they were retracted. Many things, many things obviously happened, so this, this process is dynamic and I think once again, we are, we are revisiting it. Second point that was raised about, you know, sites which are on the, on the world heritage list and thereafter you have issues of conservation and management. Professor Kari had talked about the SOC reports and what it should have and what it should not have. Uh, I think usually the SOC reports that go to the World Heritage Centre, you know, go with a very pointed kind of a response, uh, you know, as a, as a, you may say as a strategy. So looking at it professionally and looking at it from the point, a point of view of what India sends to the World Heritage Centre, sometimes these are two different issues. Third point that I think Professor Nalini raised, very vital one through her experience of, you know, engaging with the Hampi World Heritage, you know, site, wherein initially it was the group of fifty six monuments and then the scope was enlarged or rather the understanding enhanced. And therefore, you know, now we are looking at it as a cultural landscape, we are looking at it as, at a, at a much larger area with sort of multiple stakeholders in it. The villages are there, the tourism is there, multiple authorities who are working on it, Hawama has also been constituted. Now, one of the issues that we, we do grapple with, of course, you know, putting up a site on the world heritage list is a matter of pride also for us. But then these issues of conservation perhaps are a little easier to handle. But the issues of management, rather the buffer management is, it's, it's sometimes it's a bit more challenging from the point of view again, because there are multiple stakeholders. Uh, Surya would bear with me that now the Ramapa is on the world heritage list wherein the initial buffer proposed for three hundred meters. They are looking at a much larger area and therefore the authority needs to come in. There is a certain sort of set administrative setup that needs to be created to, to make it functional. We had a similar issue with Dholavira, which though it's in, it's, it's, it's in a no man's land almost kind of a thing. Again, we had to expand the buffer to about forty, forty one square kilometers in order to include a whole lot of supporting attributes uh of the, of the Dholavira site. So it's again, it's a continuous, it's a constant engagement, it's, it's never a perfect situation. But I also tell you from whatever limited experience that I have, world over, there is no perfect situation. There are always issues, any site across the world that you may take, the conservation and management issues are going to be there and they're constantly evolving and grappling with those, with those issues. So I thought these were the three sort of remarks that I may make. Uh, now engagement with ICOMOS and engagement with conservation professionals. Uh, as far as ASI is concerned, at least it is my endeavor that, that there is a synergy wherein conservation architects are working, you know, within the folds of the organization, even though initially or for the time being in the capacity of being consultants and they've done phenomenal job. I mean, so their, their contribution, whether they have looked at, you know, aspects of world heritage, they have done site management plans and touch site management plan is prepared, which is, which is right now with the, with the, with the Honorable Supreme Court. Uh, they have also looked at the periodic reporting, the, the second cycle and now the third cycle. It is the conservation architects who are working within the organization that they have handled this extremely complex exercise. So a lot of contribution that they are making, I'm aware of the fact that they are also working with circles and they're doing very good, good job, whether it is the documentation, condition appraisal, management plans, even the visitor management, all these aspects that they are, they're, they're contributing. I thought, Malini, I should, I, I should share with you that your, the, I'm in touch with Lakshmi and twelve of your students are, you know, interning with ASI, which I, I, I'm personally very, very sort of pleased about. Uh, that's, that's something happening. On a more professional level, engaging with ICOMOS, because as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, that ICOMOS being the, being one of the prominent advisory bodies of UNESCO and the World Heritage Centre, rather World Heritage Committee, I think we need to engage with them. You have several national scientific committees, you have international scientific committees. Uh, and therefore, the kind of complex issues that we are looking at, the, the bench strength that the, that the ICOMOS has in terms of its national committees and its, its professionals, they have a lot to contribute. When Shikha talked about Project Mousam, we are looking at transnational routes, we are looking at cultural landscapes, we are looking at multiple set of attributes which are applicable on it. And also it is the cross-conventional approach which is also applicable on it. So it's not the World Heritage Convention, there are multiple conventions that are looking at it. So therefore, engaging with ICOMOS, engaging also with IUCN is something that is, that is the order of the day. Today, as ASI, if we are engaging with the Wildlife Institute of India, which is also the UNESCO category two centre, I think engaging with ICOMOS and engaging with IUCN is something that we would, we would really, really look forward to. Uh, I'm in discussion with Naveen and I think, you know, we, we're going to soon set up a meeting between the DGASI and, and the ICOMOS to basically take it forward. So plenty of opportunity, plenty of scope of working together, you know, is something that I'm, I'm looking forward to. So thank you, I think this is what I would say.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Janvi Sharma G. Now, there are a few questions from the audience and also from online, just to take. So may I have some questions, please? Yes, question to Janvi Sharma G. Yeah, the question of, the question from Shalanidhas Gupta, Secretary ICOMOS India is that when these processes of site evaluation by ICOMOS that happens for world heritage sites, why don't we make ICOMOS India members, scientific committee members to be part of these missions? Uh, that is one and also during the process of evaluation and the finalization of the dossiers when they are being sent. So whether that is being, that is happening at the only archaeological survey of India and the ministry level, is it a mandate? Or can we also have ICOMOS India and members and of such institutions to be part of this process?
I'll, I'll answer the second part first, that's the easier one. Uh, first is that, you know, when we are looking at any proposal that, that is being sent from India to the, to the World Heritage Centre, it goes through an exhaustive process of scrutiny. We have the Advisory Committee, you know, the Advisory Committee on World Heritage Matters. Uh, it's continued to, to function somehow, uh, which has again, uh, multiple professionals, including conservation architects on board. Shikha is also a part of it and there are other conservation architects also who are, who are a part of it. And there are other disciplines who are also part of it. That, that, you know, ACWHM that we had, we are, you know, sort of re-tracing it. The composition is being reworked, rather has been reworked out and it's been sent to the ministry. And I must, I must inform you that ICOMOS India is made one of the ex-official members of the, you know, ACWHM. So once this is approved by the ministry, of course, you would have a, you had to have a, you know, major role in, in scrutinizing any aspect related to world heritage that, that will come up in future. Uh, second is that in Project Mousam also, I think we're going to, ASI is going to invite the ICOMOS India for its participation. And there are these, well, of course, there are certain sessions on, on themes like trade and cultural context and all that. But there are sessions on world heritage and how do we define various attributes for, for Project Mousam. Now that's part one. Part two about, you know, about having ICOMOS India as a, as a part of, you know, the, when the, when the ICOMOS evaluation happens. Well, to be very honest, this is something that is on the, on the end will, the modalities will be looked into from the point of view, whether the protocols allow that. And in case the protocols allow that, I don't think there is, there is any issue in that. So that is what I would say here.
I think both answers are positive and it is moving towards that. Yeah, I know, he has mentioned, he has mentioned that the modalities are being worked out. So he would come up with that, yeah. So any, any more questions?
Yeah, I must mention, it's very impressive hall. And thanks to ICOMOS that you have shown that we were not talking only on a screen.
Yeah, thanks to Sushant University. And Narzoon representative, who were instrumental in getting this. Uh, so now there is one question from Sunya, that is how to resonate the outstanding universal value willingly in simple-minded Indian with simple needs unless the heritage is a part of their life? Anyway, some very complex question. So would you like to answer, Shika, Shikas?
Um, well, I, I think it's a very important question, you know, because half the time people are just figuring what is the outstanding universal value. And then once, even if they have read it, really to understand it and then how to use it in practice in the management plan and then also to explain how the managers themselves would use is quite a task. And in the Indian context, I mean, you know, there are a lot of cases which we have seen when we are nominating a site that it was already mentioned earlier that often, you know, it's, it's from a different perspective or a different culture and they would not understand. So it's the way you, you know, place it. Because what you have to place as something of value has to be your own culture and on your own people first. But then you also have to prove how that is become of universal value, how it is so unique that, you know, if you compare it with other sites on the world, it is really, it stands as unique being of that value. So I think only that we have to understand that our sites which only qualify to that level would be recognized as world heritage, which is not to devalue the other levels, whether it's national, regional, local, whatever associative value. And today even UNESCO says that, you know, it says, don't leave your other values out. If you've seen, you know, you can see on World Heritage Centre, there are a lot of YouTube links to the previous lockdown webinars. I was in one of them where for a historic city, you know, Professor Jyoti Josagar showed like the matrix of values that we have to address. And she clearly said it's not just the O U V and the attributes, but even the local values. So in your management plan, that's what you need to look at holistically. So we, we really need to ensure that we are not, you know, compromising on our local living heritage value while also addressing the O U V. But we do need to understand the difference and that is something if ICOMOS can take it up. Because I find in the present conservation architects or in general in conservation architects amongst the ones in India, the value analysis. conservation architects or in general in conservation architects amongst uh the ones in India, the value analysis is not very strong. That, I mean, I feel it's lacking. There are very few who really get into the value analysis, you know, breaking it down to the last bit and really addressing how the value should be protected. So that I'm sure, I mean, Nalini knows all about it and she has taught it all her life, but how many really practice it is is the question, you know?
Yeah. Would you like to say something, Professor Nalini Tako?
No, it is very tough, you know, uh to be able to, you know, assess values, et cetera, and it needs a lot of maturity also and also knowledge and you know, that's a thing, that's why I say intellectually they have, you have to train the intellectual capacity building, you know? And then I think they will, you know, and the rest is uh training, education, you know, they have to be given, informed uh the students, they'll pick it up, but that's that's it.
Okay, thank you.
And I do think uh education in college, educational institution for conservation is very important in the twenty-first century, because it's coming to be a very important, you know, professional activity or at uh you know, uh activity, it's becoming very important. It cannot be done by just anyone. I think that has to be given and that's how we will produce people who are well-informed, knowledgeable, you know, and all that. So I think that's important. Do you agree with me? It's in the college that this can happen. It was not and it has to be uh somehow worked out there, okay, do it.
So uh okay ma'am, I think uh we have uh come to the closure of the session uh including the uh World Heritage Convention and reflections on Indian context. And the second part, the roundtable discussion towards engaging Ecomos India in various activities of world heritage matters in India, um there are panel of experts, Dr. Shekha Jain, uh Professor Nalini Tako, Professor Ajay Khare and Mr. Janvi Sharma. Thank you very much uh for uh here, being here and sharing your views. And we have recorded all your uh ideas, opinions and thoughts um and we will be sharing with you uh in further uh communicating with the authorities and ministry uh to engage ourselves uh in various activities of World Heritage Convention and World Heritage Matters. Uh thank you very much and we are closing this uh session of World Heritage Matters and Roundtable Discussion. With this and we will have after a break, we will have the next part of our uh presentation and discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Surya.
Thank you very much.
We'll continue the uh presentation, uh the which was supposed to be in between these two uh discussion and roundtable discussion. Um now uh over to Aditi, uh for the introduction to Ecomos India, to master plan heritage in India at seventy-five years of independence. That is one part she would be presenting and with a with after taking a few uh observations from all of us, uh she would also be presenting on uh project outdoors. Um so this will be a continuous uh session. Uh while we are listening to this, we can also have uh tea uh being served outside. So over to you, Aditi, please. After the session.
So very heavy sessions after very heavy lunch. Uh I'll try to be very quick and crisp. Uh most of the things are already discussed for the master plan and in bits and pieces throughout the sessions today. So I'll just wrap it around all the things together in a package and we'll be sharing that package with you after this particular session also. So a little bit introduction about me, I am currently the interim national representative for EPWG Icos India and I'm also representing North Zone EPWG Group as well as our co-coordinator for an SEHDV. Uh my experience with all of these three groups have actually culminated in developing this particular presentation. So the presentation will basically talk about first a simple relation between Azadi Kamrit Mahatsav and the master plan of Ecomos India. Uh the existing narrative followed up with a full team composition for the master plan project and what are the sub-projects that we have received as proposals within this master plan. Later we'll just conclude with the budget that we got recently sorted out as well as what will be our strategy for the fundraising. This is a banner actually from the Ministry of Culture's webpage and it gives an idea about what Azadi Kamrit Mahatsav is. Uh it's basically celebrating the and commemorating the seventy-fifth year of independence and the glorious history of its people and celebrating what they have contributed in the development of the nation. It also in a way symbolizes and promotes the infrastructure development uh in different areas and different sectors as well as uh you know, the introduces us to the uh spirit of Atmnevar Bharat and India two point O. Um hmm it is uh uncontested that heritage is an integral part of the development, you cannot separate heritage from the development and therefore it lies at the core of this whole Azadi Kamrit Mahatsav. Whatever we have planned in this particular narrative for this project clearly syncs with what Azadi Kamrit Mahatsav is, how it is planned and what are the parameters that are mentioned by Ministry of Culture on its website. Uh so uh the first focus area is the new republic, uh but an ancient country, a brief description about India and the whole nation building momentum. The second idea focuses on the conservation uninterpreted, that is before and after colonization. Uh basically, the journey from regional scriptures to international charters. The third parameter is the colonized conservation, that is the emergence of ASI Marshall Manual and among others. The fourth is basically the conservation school of thought, that is the emergence of SBA, SIP, uh maybe students returning from York, Ikram and the new emerging professional. The fifth is the heritage in ox, that is the next generation of conservation professionals and what we have actually missed and actually been able to address in educating them. Uh the sixth, that is the most important is heritage now, that is us, our ideas and our vision for the conservation and protection of our heritage. The seventh is World Heritage Convention at the rate fifty, that is the future of our uh WHS gap analysis and the intervention processes for the same. And the last one is heritage in future at the eight hundred, that is hundred years, that is which addresses obviously the existing problems and which will also be the major future issues of the world, of the globe. Uh this is a team composition which consists of two members from XCOM, uh one member from the Scientific Steering Committee, three members from the Scientific Council and all the representatives of the EPWG uh different zones as well as the national representative. I'll not go through all the names, but basically this is the uh master plan committee that we have right now. There are around ten projects that have been proposed within this particular plan and I'll be just going through a brief of four of them because I have the details for the same. Uh other projects are in the pipeline, they are still curating it and will be soon sending out uh uh sort of participation as well as for people to actually contribute in this project and lead it. Uh there is also space for other set of projects, if you have anything in mind, you can pitch it out and we'll include it in the master plan. Uh some key insights which have already been discussed, it will be this whole master plan activity would be sort of a mentorship activity where you'll have a senior member anchoring the whole project as well as a EPWG member or a young professional who will be actually working with him or her side by side in developing this project. Uh one of the projects that is uh proposed by Shalini Das Gupta ma'am as well as Saranya is the exhibition of heritage in India at the rate seventy-five years. Uh this exhibition basically uh includes all the nine parameters that I have discussed in the second slide and there uh the whole exhibition is planned in uh India Habitat Center. It's a six-month-long activity and they have in detail curated the whole activity and the they'll soon be inviting the uh people to actually contribute for this. Uh the second one is basically a proposal for organizing seventy-five heritage walks all over India. So we have multiple zones, we have multiple members present in different zones, they are uh basically a part of uh different organizations that are already organizing heritage walks. So how can we, you know, curate all of this in one particular storyline and narrative and go ahead with, you know, uh compiling each of the seventy-five heritage walks together and see what comes out after this? Because there are a lot of untouched locations that we don't know about, there are not a lot of natural as well as built heritage settings that we don't know about and locally we may be able to explore it and stitch it in our narrative. The third is basically a publication that Naveen sir has actually already talked about in his presentation, so I'll skip this, I'm sorry. Uh the uh fourth one is basically the proposal for events in collaboration with the urban local bodies on subject of heritage and sustainable development goals. This is basically the whole idea is to localize the SDG goals to the minimum lowest level, that is at the ULP level. And the whole inspiration is derived from the International Working Group from of SDGs where they have already published a document doc that talks about the interlinkages between heritage and SDGs. So uh we are looking into different type of activities within this project, that is collaborative workshops, collab- uh stakeholder meetings, roundtable meetings. The whole idea is to generate knowledge as well as capacity building for professionals to actually contribute in this particular area. Uh I will be sharing the contact cards along with the briefs of each of these projects for people to actually contribute and we'll be also developing a brochure for the same for the fundraising. So all these ideas will be compiled in one particular document and will be accessible to everybody to uh contribute through funding as well as their individual efforts. Uh already basically, already given by Priyanka before, this is the budget that we have decided which will be uh subjected to donations and funding. All the projects have been uh detailed out and have been also been, I mean, the uh whatever numbers are written here, we know that uh how they will be utilized. We have broken into different sections for different projects and we hope to actually begin with the fundraising activity in the next upcoming month. Uh so the first step would be actually to send out the call for uh this fundraising committee and we'll be developing a master plan brochure, uh which will be floated out with letters to different ministries, central ministries as well as the state governments that can contribute. Furthermore, we have also identified various organizations and there's some of their names have already been spoken up uh in our pre- previous sessions for targeting funds, targeted funding. Another idea that Naveen sir has proposed is for the crowdfunding. So we can like look into different strategies, how we can develop these uh for each project specifically, be very sure about how this project, each project is contributing to the uh seventy-five years agenda of the Indian government so that uh we can actually target the organization and uh inspire them actually to contribute. It should be the, all the projects should be really contextualized in order to uh acquire funding. So each team will be working accordingly, each sub-project will be working accordingly and the fundraising committee will be supporting them in this whole process. So that is all about master plan. We'll be sharing a compiled documentation of the same which will have all the details and you can choose where to contribute at the right. Yes.
I am actually finished regarding this, yes. Yes, yes. Saranya, if you can unmute yourself.
Okay, I just wanted to add, I think what Shalini was mentioning is the budget that is being shared right now is for internal funding, uh but the overall funding that we seek actually for heritage at seventy-five is much more larger than that, which is for the external funding that is also being uh budgeted by the master plan team. So I think that is what she was uh trying to mention that there is a larger scope that we are looking at as for external funding, yeah.
No, that's fine. Hi, Saranya, it's Priyanka here.
Hi.
Hi. So I've heard everything and basically what we've done earlier today, we've approved a budget for fourteen and a half lakhs. Now, within the understanding that the event will actually require uh an amount multi-fold to this, it will go into corros. What we're seeing in our budget is the fourteen and a half lakhs, we are willing to commit to spending that even before we have a commitment from elsewhere, so that we at least have some sort of capital expenditure and some sort of momentum going to even plan these events. Having said that, the fourteen and a half lakhs by the end of the financial year, that's why fundraising is so important, that by the end of the financial year, we should have been able to compensate it back. We should have had uh donations and everything that match it much, much more than what we expect. So the commitment that ICOMOS India has given and the budget that's been approved earlier today is subject to the fact this fourteen and a half lakhs by March of twenty-two, twenty-three will come back to Ecomos. So as long as the the entire committee working on the master plan is clear on that.
Yeah. Okay, so are are you saying that it has to be reimbursed back to uh?
Absolutely. Donations, this amount is being spent subject to donations and funding that we anticipate back in the future.
Okay.
It's a seed money being given that ICOMOS would want back.
Okay, alright.
This. Yes, basically, uh so Ms. Makhija, the North Zone representative for everyone online, is basically or further kind of explained this, that the seed money that Ecomos India is giving is so that we can at least mobilize the work and get uh much of the work going in terms of research in terms required, whatever capital expenditure is needed to mobilize this work. But down the line, funding is essential. At the end of the financial year, having spent this money, the expectation is we would have had donations that that, you know, reimburse this back to Ecomos India and more. The event is as much uh uh a dream of Ecomos India to contribute to Azadi Mahatsav but it's it's an attempt uh to also build our corpus through it. It's it's exactly the same way that the General Assembly was planning. You plan a large event so that your members contribute in a meaningful big way, but you also build your corpus so that over the course of the next few years, you can sustain yourself through the efforts that go into that for you. So look at this as like a mini GA that we're back.
Okay. Thanks, Priyanka.
So I guess the effort will be two ends, you will be curating the projects as well and you will be strategizing the funding at the same time. Both has to go hand in hand, we cannot leave one thing behind. So this is the summary of the discussion, therefore funding right now. So uh I'll just come here and I mean, there are a lot of projects that strictly focus on uh engagement of the community, if you see heritage and education, even the project outdoors, uh it is basically for the citizens of city. I mean, and making the heritage site accessible to them. So there are some projects that are not uh you know, being carried out with the mindset of conservation and preservation but on the other side, looking at how you can involve the citizens as a part of it. We are not technically thinking about how to conserve and preserve in that way, but we are driving the community to contribute in a way as a enabler, basically acting like that.
Uh you have to refit lies the community to empower the community to refit lies the. So it is a scientific thing. If you uh add a very important aspect is how you link public funding to uh which comes from. So most things we will have to have very carefully, but I think it's a very, very uh hiring target. And if you're looking at this as a target, you need to put like a working office in place immediately. Which I I I mean, so whatever I have ever thought, this means that ten people office working there, like, reflecting off here jumping out ideas and having very good graphics that they're finding to the organization. It's like a you know, you're taking on a job, which is so I but the way this job is to have a very detailed task.
Yes.
And that detailed task is such that time and will heal people identified in organizations who are willing to step up.
So I mean, I would just say here that we are not alone, I mean, it took us three months time to actually curate this together. For each project, we have a detailed proposal in hand, a team already in place for those projects. With average on an average, three to five members in each of the team and maybe more in some of them. So we'll wait for these projects to actually detail out and wait for the funding committee to be on board. And I, yes, we have to meticulously plan the whole process together. We have already done some of them, I think this will, this A G M post A G M session is a boost to actually, you know, take this process forward. And just giving it, you know, introducing this whole thing as a package to everybody in the ICOMAS. So now I think people can actually opt for what they can contribute. So the idea was that we are already working on these projects, some of projects have already begun in some or the other way. I will soon be sharing the details so that it is much more clear to everybody. I think that's all for the master plan presentation, if any other.
Yes, it is impressive, but I think you are sharing the details and I would add here that because it is under the other, the other thoughts of various state and other organizations, institutions, semi-government. Are also trying to, to their way, they do have fun, they just need to know how and where to act. So since you are already brainstorming with, within, I suppose, within with each other, setting up the whole thing. I, I think Smitha's point about having some sort of internal structure, and I'm sure you've also thought about it. Because what, what you shared already seems to be talking about it. And I think we certainly have to aim for the seventy-five, was it seventy-five crore or seven hundred and fifty crore? So, yeah, seven, it's impossible, the seventy-five heritage walks certainly we can do, because that's not going to do, because that's a task to repeat, that's a process. But so we are all on board for helping figure out where some of this funding gets out from. In that sense, what the experience of the G A twenty-seventeen is valuable, but since the government and semi-government organizations and some private people might want to be doing that bit, I think we have that advantage, which we didn't have itself.
Thank you, ma'am. I guess contextualizing are all our proposal based on whoever we are pitching it to is very important.
Okay, here's what I have to say, you know, I see this as a challenge in many, many projects where we aim to do a lot more and we obviously are short of time and other resources. But I think, you know, we've been trying to find a way, and I think it's the right group for the, you know, for product of this stuff. You know, there is, you just have to connect the dots like ma'am, which is exactly said, government departments, even private players who may have interest in heritage assets. We just have to identify, connect the dots, create a little network and obviously someone will benefit from it. And let's make not, you know, events are just one of things, let's try and do something which is most for long-lasting and sustainable as an in-battle. There's a model that we can create and I'm not, you know, just an event, we spend just talking this one off and it gets over. Let's try and see how we can, so like, I don't think the lighting industry has been very good, but that is one of the ways to look at it, which probably scales longer than like, you do that. More accessible from a time perspective, we need another great time to go to the tech, move on to the project, you know. So just saying, you know, you just have to open up a room, find methods of connecting the dots, somebody will benefit from someone that is just have to.
Sorry, I missed him. So Ashish here says that we actually need to connect the dots, map the important stakeholders who will be actually interested in funding it some or the other way, a different interest areas. And see that how we can actually focus our projects, align it according to the same. Okay, so I think I was going to present another project, which would have a little bit clarified you on these lines that how we are going about this whole master plan, it was a project outdoors. I think I'll just take three minutes for that, I won't take much time. Can I just? So basically this project is in collaboration with World Economic Forum Global Shapers Community. Global Shapers Community is an initiative by World Economic Forum and they have various hub throughout the world. And Gurgaon Hub is one of them and I'm a part of the Gurgaon Hub and I'm leading this project from there. This project basically talks about how you can make all the heritage sites listed, not listed, natural, built, actually accessible to the citizens, citizens of the city. And how you can highlight that how these sites are actually contributing to the sustainable development of the city and reaching, achieving various targets of the S D Gs. If you see, this is illustration that I made for the website as a banner and it clearly tries to map different locations in N C R and relates links into the S D Gs that it is fulfilling. I just gave, so the idea is to build a repository, an online repository of hundreds of sites that we can actually visit and inspire as citizens to visit. And in a process of the same, inspire them to conserve and preserve it. We are starting this project from Gurgaon, basically N C R, we have already mapped around twenty-five sites and we have developed a webpage through the global shapers. The idea was, I initiate the idea to actually collaborate with ICOMAS to get the technical support and expertise. So that they can help us in actually understanding how to map these and document these sites. Because I am the only person who is interested in heritage in that particular community. So we need technical support for developing the website and we need people who can actually impart that knowledge that how these sites should actually be documented. So that the online repository that is built is easily accessible to the citizens. And it is actually, it gives the information of most of the sites that you can imagine in your particular city. So right now we have these sites being documented in different sort of webpages and travel blogs and the information is really scattered. So if we can actually collaborate with the tourism department or the planning department of the state or the city and try to host our webpage on their website, it will be actually, you know, it will be a milestone to achieve, achieve something like this. So the idea is basically mapping these websites on different, various different parameters. And developing a pocket list for the citizens of the city. The whole project is divided into three parts, the first one is basically establishes interlinkages with the S D Gs. There are around ten S D Gs that we can think about, which clearly relates to the heritage, there is not much documentation. A vague interlinkages has been established through different papers and research works and by ICOMAS S D G working book also. And we can try to localize the same in context of our sites. We'll have podcasts, discussion with various development sector experts, S D G experts as well as conservation experts. And see that what we can derive from there collectively. The second is basically to map all the sites together on different parameters and put it on our webpage. And this is basically a format that we can use if we have graphic designings on board. The last is basically documenting solutions and success stories throughout the city. For example, the Wazirpur Banth, basically in Gurgaon, has been restored by the I M Gurgaon NGO as well as through C S R funding from IDIO, I guess. And they have developed a one stretch long cycle walkway and they have tried to restore the vegetation and develop a natural ecosystem in that one stretch kilometer. It was basically a dumping ground some while back. So documenting such sites, such success stories and bringing them into light and see that how it can inspire the other sites to be regenerated. We'll begin with basically, we're confined to the N C R region, but we'll soon, you know, extend ourselves to other zones. Because global shaper hubs are present in other zones, ICOMAS also is presented in different zones and then also think about this project, how to take it internationally. These are some short term and long term output and impact that we'll be having. I mean, I'll share the presentation with you so that it's easy. We have, so I have already introduced this project to ICOMAS India. Another society, another collaborator that we already have on board is the New Delhi Nature Society. Who themselves organize heritage walks and they have done thousands of heritage walks in N C R. So they are already on board, we are looking into different other organizations who can support us in this process. And we'll be soon sending out calls for, you know, contributing this project to all, to ICOMAS list. So I think that's it, this is basically an example of how we are taking up this project. And same sort of working is already planned for different other projects also. So the working has begun and we would obviously need your support to actually achieve the goal that we have, that's it. Okay. Tree box. I don't know if I can find that webpage, but I'll share the link with everybody.
Yeah. So thank you everyone once again and we see some comments and questions in the chat box as well. We will address them later, very sorry, you can send them our, on icomas@gmail dot com and we will definitely respond to them. I would now like to request Dr. Rema to please come and give the conclusion now to find out you know about that, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and if you feel it's been a long day, it's only a short step in our personal journey in our professional lives. And if you think about a human life, it's still a moment in how much we can achieve. Anyway, I'm feeling lost without my mask and I've just realized that I'm seeing people who I haven't seen in two years, including members of the XCOM. So it's, I've been going through the last few days, months, where you see a real person and you think it's a hologram, because you're not used to it. And I'm also looking at the screen as I'm talking. I think our challenge is always going to be there. And it is something I tried to say when I was on my way and had a mask and stuff tucked into my ears, earphones I think they're called. And that is, together we can achieve anything we want. Except maybe walk to the moon or fly to the moon because of oxygen issues. But today has been an exciting day, even if it's a long day. Because the A G M brought up a whole range of places and issues where we work together, where the different zones have worked together, where the different. We didn't go into N S Cs today because that's another step, but certainly together what the country and the membership have done. Also, it's brought up some of the financial areas in which we can explore more collaborative events. So thank you for keeping some money aside, lots of money aside, Priyanka, I don't know how you manage it, but well done on that. And then of course, this afternoon's very exciting symposium in, I don't know, it's like a symphony in many parts. You know, you went from a presentation by, and very ably chaired by Dr. Suria with this, thank you for that, Suria. With, with our speakers, including the hovering presence of UNESCO with the message from Eric. But then the round table and then the very impressive way in which Aditi has brought together the work that the E P W G is doing. The two stages, more than two stages actually, because again it will be continuing. So I'm, I'm really glad I was able to get here today to be part of that, feel that synergy. And for those of you who are still watching online and are not here, you're here in your kind of spiritual, yes, in spirit. But I think you will probably be feeling the synergy across the waves also. And if you are not yet, as more and more activity carries on, you will feel that. So again, I'm going to end with that, no, I will, I will say one thing before that and that was to do with the mentorship program. And last year when it was being launched and the executive committee discussed it and then it was, you know, brought out. Hi Mesha, that's what you said. I said, oh great, I, I know, I want to be part of it also and get a mentor and my colleague said, you realize? We, we want you to be a mentor and not a mentee. But I think we come back to this, we are always learning from each other and learning doesn't end. And I think when Ananya was saying something like, you know, we might be wiser, I don't think we are wiser, we've just been there for a little longer. And we've learned when to keep our mouths shut, which is very rarely, and when to make a noise. But certainly that synergy is coming through and I will now end, promise, last words. Together we can and we will. So thank you everyone and we go for it now. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone, thank you to the online participants as well, the A G M along with the World Heritage Event stands close.